Good evening. We will now open up our public, our St. Lucie County School Board meeting, September the 8th, 2015. Would you please stand with me for the pledge. Directly after it will be the kids at Hope.
A pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that Hope Treasure Hunter's pledge? As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated, thank you. Okay, please excuse me if my voice sounds a little weak. I've got a little bug here, but we're gonna be alright. We're gonna go right into our order of meeting. I'd like to remind our audience that if there is any unscheduled speakers, please fill out your form. You can find them in the back. Turn them over to Ms. Harrison, and she will get them directly to us. We'll be happy to acknowledge you at the right time. Thank you. Our vision, our vision for St. Lucie County schools, in partnership with parents and community, will become premier centers of knowledge that are surrounded around our students and the work that is provided to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual child. Furthermore, our promise is to move from good to great, focusing on our core business, which is the creation of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for every child, every day. At this time, we're going to ask Mr. Tim Bajiran, who is our CFO Business Representative, to please come forward and do his presentation on the 2015-2016 budget. He will give us information on the rollback rates. It will include our millage trends, our impact on taxpayers, as well as our required resolution. Thank you, Mr. Bajiran.
Thank you. I have a PowerPoint presentation to help us cover the required topics. This is the final hearing for the adoption of the 2015-16 fiscal year millages and budget. We are required to discuss certain topics during the hearing. We had the tentative hearing in July, and that established the rates that were included in the recent tax notices, and the rates in tonight's recommendation are the same, no change. So the different millage rates by group are shown in the table here. You can see that the gross taxable value, the underlying property tax values in the county, for all millages is $18.2 billion. And we've got three different areas. The 5.035 is the required local effort millage rate. That's roughly 70 percent of the total. What's key there is the term required. The school district, the board must approve that millage rate in order to participate in the Florida Education Finance Program, which pulls in additional state dollars. So there's very little flexibility with the local school board to do anything with the millage rate, other than adopt the maximum amounts permitted. The next line, the .748, is a supplemental operating discretionary millage. That's the maximum that can be levied. And the 1.5 mils is the maximum that can be levied in the capital outlay area. So that 1.5 mils that generates the $27.2 million, as you can see at 100 percent, this number right here, that's all for capital outlay purposes. I've got this other column here at 96 percent, because we really only collect around 96 percent because of the discounts that taxpayers receive for early payment. So the total millage recommended for 2015-16 is 7.283. This slide shows the change in millage rate compared to last year. It's a .042 change. I added this slide this afternoon when I was reviewing this, realizing that we didn't have a very clear indication of the change early on in the presentation. So this will update the information that's on the web after tonight's board meeting. But this shows the changes 2015 compared to 2016, and at the very, well, let me walk you through it. So we have a .042 change in the millage rate. There's a $12,000 increase in the average assessed value for a home in the county. Average, 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 everybody knows what average is, right? And those two, those two combined to drive an increase in the average taxes paid, taxes levied by the school district, of $90.88. So that's the annual increase when compared to last year, with the increase in the millage rate and the increase in the taxable value. A history of millage rates going all the way back to 2002-3, you know, 8.809 back in 2002-3, we had some drops, and it's starting to trend back up a little bit. And again, as a reminder, that's driven by legislative action. That's not anything that the school board is, has the discretion to do. The only thing the school board could do would be to lower the millage rate. This just shows the breakdown between the operating and the capital. It's important, because you can see, we used to get 2.0 mils, and that was changed in 2008-9. It dropped to 1.75. You can see there's a slight corresponding increase in the orange bar, the general fund amount. So that was really, you know, a swap in the millage rate between capital and general. And it was done again in 2009-10, and you can see, we are still at the 1.5 capital millage maximum. And that's a big deal for the district's long-term facilities maintenance plan, because those capital dollars, a lot of those, a lot of the capital revenues are already committed for debt service, our mortgage payments for schools that we have built. And we've talked about that a lot in capital outlay workshops, and we'll continue to discuss that. And I believe that's in the 2016 legislative priorities also, to address, at least allowing districts the option of moving back toward the 2.0 mil cap. This is what it would look like, oops, if we added the additional .5 mil to go from 1.5 back to 2.0. And you can see, it would be a total of 7.533, which is still well below where we were back in 2002, 3, 4. That's the same table that we had seen, that's just from the previous presentation. Here's the trend in the taxable value. So, you know, something that we point out to community members is, we had such a steep decline in the taxable value, which you'll see in a corresponding slide, we had the same decrease in the tax collections. Huge decrease. We're starting to recover, but the upward slope is, is a lot less steep. It's not nearly as dramatic of a slope. Tax collection history, pretty much the same thing, those two slides, very similar trends. And this table compares what we were collecting back in 2007-8, right at the start of the financial crisis, and it shows what the impact on taxpayers has been. So this column is actual tax collections in 15-16. It's the estimated tax collections. This column compares, for example, 2008-9 to 2007-8. We had a $14 million decrease. 2009-10 compared to 78, it was a $41 million, $42 million decrease. And so you can see, even though we're starting to have the trend move back in the, you know, toward the 2007-8 level, we're still almost $60 million below tax collections on an annual basis. Cumulative number, $428 million less in tax collections. So that's significant reduction in the tax burden by the school district on taxpayers. The next required item to discuss is the rollback rate. And so remember, the first table, it had a $12,000 increase in the taxable value. What the rollback rate wants to do is say, alright, well, if, if there was no change in the taxable value, what millage rate would the school district levy to generate the same revenue? So there's no change in the tax burden on the homeowner. And so that's a calculation we're required to perform. And so we look at last year, 2014-15, taxable value of $17.2 billion, millage rate of 7.241. So we collected 124, or levied 124.8 million in taxes. So what the rollback rate does is calculates what the millage rate would be this year with this higher taxable value to generate the same 124.8 million. And that is 6.9 mils. So applying 6.9 mils to the gross taxable value this year to generate the same revenue as last year, that's called the rollback rate. And so what we have to do is compare the proposed millage rate, the 7.283, to that 6.9, instead of comparing it to last year's, you know, actual 7.241 millage rate. And that comparison shows that the total millage rate to be levied is 5.55 percent more than the rollback rate. Here's a table showing the budget by fund group, a total of $468,466,709. And that covers the required discussion topics.
Board members, are there any comments or any questions on what we just heard? Okay, this time, then we will close. No, we will open. We will open our public hearing. Are there anyone out there that would like to comment on any of the presentation? Okay, seeing none. We will now close the public hearing, and we will ask for recommendation now on the proposed adoption of millage, final millage rates, and tentative budget for 2015-16. Superintendent Jen.
Recommend the board approve the final required local effort millage of 5.035 mils, as specified in the Resolution 2015-16, TRIM Final A.
Board, we have the superintendent recommendations. Any motion on the floor, please?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Ms. Harley, and second by Ms. Hensley. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Recommendation on the adoption of final required local effort millage?
Recommend the board approve the district school tax discretionary operating millage of 0.7480 mils, as specified in the Resolution 2015-16, TRIM Final A.
Board members, can I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Hilson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Recommendation on the adoption of district school tax discretionary operating millage?
Recommend the board approve the district discretionary local capital improvements millage at 1.5000 mils, as specified in Resolution 2015-16, TRIM Final A.
Board members, may I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Harley?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And now we will have the adoption of the district discretionary local capital improvement millage. Motion, please? So moved by Ms. Hensley, was that? Second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That carries five zero as well. Adoption of the district discretionary local capital improvement millage, recommendation, please?
Recommend the board adopt the 2015-16 final budget in the amount of $468,466,709.
Motion, please?
Second.
So moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. May we have the adoption, a recommendation for the adoption of the final budget?
Recommend the board adopt Resolution TRIM 2015-16 Final B, authorizing flexibility with categorical funds. Resolution TRIM 2015-16 Final C, certifying adoption of the final millage rates by separate vote. And Resolution TRIM 2015-16 Final D, certifying adoption of the final budget.
Board, we have the recommendation. May I hear a motion? So moved, Ms. Hensley?
Second.
Second, Ms. Harley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Last but not least, adoption of Resolution TRIM 2015-2016 Final B, C, and D. Recommendation, please, Superintendent. Have we covered that one already? Okay, we're going into special order of business.
Thank you.
I want to welcome our community friends and partnerships that I see out there. So many of you that I know, you're in here to do a presentation. And so at this time, we have two of them. We have the Reading Council Proclamation, and we have the Dads Take Your Child to School Day Proclamation. May I have someone come forward at this time to do the presentation?
Good evening, Superintendent Jen, and our distinguished board members. The St. Lucie County Reading Council Board is honored to be here today on International Literacy Day to read our proclamation. And I must say that I do love all of your shirts. They're great. Whereas, the St. Lucie County Reading Council is a local professional literacy organization dedicated to supporting St. Lucie County Public School District's reading goals and initiatives, and...
Whereas, the St. Lucie County Reading Council is a chapter of the Florida Reading Association, thereby playing an active role in the Florida Reading Association Board, and being up to date with state and federal opportunities and information, and...
Whereas, the St. Lucie County Reading Council provides professional development and networking opportunities for educators, and...
Whereas, the St. Lucie County Reading Council hosts community events to promote reading and writing for students and families. And whereas, the ultimate goal in all St. Lucie County Reading Council events and communications is to promote a passion for literacy amongst the St. Lucie County educators, students, and the community, and...
Whereas, the St. Lucie Reading Council wishes to carry a visible and cohesive membership dedicated to promoting a passion for literacy across content areas, as well as for pleasure and individual purposes. And whereas, the St. Lucie County Reading Council exists for the benefit of all educators, students, families, and community members by promoting this passion for literacy.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of St. Lucie County, Florida, that each Wednesday in the 2015-2016 school year, be and is hereby recognized as a day to promote a passion for literacy in which St. Lucie County Reading Council members shall wear their council shirts as a sign of unity in promoting a passion for literacy across content areas, for pleasure, and for individual purposes.
We're gonna put it on the, on the floor for vote. Board members, will we accept the, I wonder what we're gonna do, right? Are we going to accept the proclamation for the St. Lucie County Reading Council?
Madam Chair, I have the action to read into officially before you all. Recommend the board adopt the St. Lucie County Reading Council Proclamation as presented.
Okay, we heard the recommendation.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Harley, and second by Mr. Ingasal. All in favor? Aye. Aye, any opposed? Any opposed? Okay, no opposed, okay. Okay, at this time, we would like you to introduce yourself and tell us what school you're, you're representing here.
I'm Jennifer Bozone from White City Elementary.
I'm Julie Moore. I'm at Morningside Elementary.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Chase. I'm at Okamic K-8.
Stacy Spalding from Treasure Coast High School.
Lori Beans, Bayshore Elementary School.
And I'm Heather Belitho. This is Elizabeth Belitho, and we're from Okamic.
Okay, so glad to have all of you here, and thank you for your work and your labor with the Reading Council. We appreciate everything you do. And I believe we're all members now. Make sure you get my check. Alright, thank you very much, ladies. We're gonna have a photo at this time. Thank you. Thanks. Let's hear it tonight. We're going to do the Dads Take Your Child to School Day Proclamation. Mr. Perry, Dr. Perry coming up before us.
Madam Chair, School Board Member Superintendent Jen, more than 30 years of research findings maintain the belief that a positive relationship exists between increased family engagement and student success. Statistics from the National Fatherhood Initiative, the 2004 summary study by the Parent Institute, and the 2014 meta-analysis report that there is a strong improvement in students' behavior, test scores, and graduation rates when fathers are involved in their education. At the direction of Chancellor Lyons this year, the Department of Family and Community Involvement at the Florida Department of Education reviewed and synthesized this information, and is implementing Dads Take Your Child to School Day on September 30th, 2015. Because this initiative mirrors our Million 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 Father March of 2014, we have programmed our calendar to coincide with the date of the state's activity. We believe that our initiative must be interactive, have activities for, between the father and child, relational, have opportunities for father-to-father conversation, and relevant, linked to learning. Therefore, schools will program a series of events that target the male participation and influence on the child's education. That's why in St. Lucie County, it's a movement, not a moment. Joining me tonight, committee members representing the Port St. Lucie Police Department, is Assistant Chief Richard Del Toro. From Fort Pierce Police Department, Deputy Chief Frank Amandro. And Captain Scavoso from the St. Lucie Sheriff Department, along with our district committee members, James Sloan from Westwood High School, David Washington, St. Lucie Public Schools, Edwin Munoz, Assistant Principal at Bayshore Elementary, Craig Logue, Principal at Mariposa Elementary, Elka Harris, Dean at Lincoln Park Academy, and Henry Santa Brea, Principal at Lincoln Park Academy. And here to present the proclamation for your approval and support is Chris Craft, a 1992 graduate of Westwood High School and tax collector for St. Lucie County, and Joe Smith, a 1995 graduate of Lincoln Park Academy, and Clerk of the Circuit Court for St. Lucie County, two of St. Lucie's favorite sons. Mr. Craft, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Dr. Pops. Oh, excuse me, Dr. Perry? Those of you who don't know, if it was not for Dr. Perry, I would not be standing here before you today, being a proud graduate of St. Lucie County School District. It's always a pleasure to stand here, so thank you. Dads Take Your Child to School Day, a proclamation. Whereas, education has become a matter of national security, and whereas, public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, families, family involvement in a child's learning is critical, is critical to student success from preschool through college, and sets the foundation for preparing Florida students to be lifelong learners and meaningful contributors to society. And whereas, research indicates there is a correlation between the levels of a father's involvement in their child's education and the child's academic success. And whereas, research further indicates that children whose fathers take, take active roles in their educational lives earn better grades, higher scores on tests, enjoy school more, and are more likely to graduate from high school and attend college, and...
And whereas, St. Lucie Public Schools have established effective homeschool collaborations so that families can be actively involved in the educational and social, emotional development of students. And whereas, Florida's educational leaders are providing opportunities for fathers to engage more fully in their child's education, and strengthen the connections between fathers and schools. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the critical contributions made by fathers who foster a love for learning in their children, and by educators who acknowledge the importance of family engagement, and encourage participation by fathers as an integral part of the mission of all schools. And whereas, fathers, grandfathers, uncles, big brothers, significant male caregivers, mentors, and friends are all encouraged to participate in the Dads Take Your Child to School Day.
Mr. Superintendent?
Recommend the board adopts the Dads Take Your Child to School Day Proclamation as presented.
Board, recommendation is out. May I have a motion? So moved by Ms. Hensley?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harley. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Gentlemen, may we have a picture with you all?
All this blue and green.
Yeah, selfie.
You heard the butt hugs. Hi. You better go get your picture taken. They're a nice group of guys. How come we're not clapping? Clapping.
Thank you, gentlemen. We can't tell you how much we appreciate your volunteer service in St. Lucie County schools. We need you, and we thank you for coming. Okay, we're gonna go right into our special recognition, our Star Award, and it will be presented by Ms. Jerger.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Jen. Tonight, we are going to recognize a team of staff members from Westgate K-8. They have mastered the concept of teamwork. They have gone over and above in making sure that all students are safe during parent pickup. With approximately 600 students being picked up daily, they have been able to implement a safe and organized plan to ensure that all students get to their parents' cars very safely. And this is rain or shine, as you can see in the picture there. They are soaking wet. So this evening, we'd like to recognize Ms. Jennifer Harris, Ron Noble, Dana Buick, Christopher Calvo, Natalie Collis, Sean McInerney, and Andrea Malin. They are always taking very good care of our students. Please come on up.
(APPLAUSE)
And we will continue to recognize additional staff members who support our school services each and every month, because we know that there are so many wonderful things taking place inside and outside of our schools. At this time, we would like to recognize Mrs. Barbara Audette, who is representing the Payroll Department of our finance team. With an eye toward the needs of the St. Lucie Public School staff during the recent weather event in which circumstances were unknown about storm direction and its impact on St. Lucie Public Schools, she, along with her team, facilitated the early release of payroll on Friday instead of Monday to support employees and their preparation for the potential threat to our coast. Mrs. Audette, if you would like to come forward, please, and members of your team, if you'd please stand. And perhaps the best way to do this, if you could just join us right up here, and we have a few to recognize along with you. In the area of District Maintenance Team, we would like to recognize George Despinos, who cannot be with us this evening, but Mr. Marty Sanders will be accepting on his behalf. George is a caring and dedicated electrician in the District Maintenance Team. As stated by the Principal of Oakhamak K-8, while walking the campus on Thursday, I came across a large area of ceiling tiles and framing that was missing, causing a hole above a teacher's door. George was on campus and he assisted in getting the area fixed prior to our parents arriving for open house. He and his coworker did a wonderful job, and the teachers and I really appreciated how quickly he came to our service. Mr. Sanders will be accepting on his behalf. We have wonderful school bus drivers and bus aides who transport our students day in and day out, and from transportation, we are so honored to recognize Ms. Latonya Hubbard. Ms. Hubbard serves as a bus driver and as one of the first individuals a child sees before school starts and one of the last individuals a child sees after the school day closes. Mrs. Hubbard's compassion and caring to support her students in her charge are wonderful bookends to the day in the life of a student. She is very customer-friendly. In fact, her introductory and update phone calls to parents are greatly appreciated. Her congenial and informative phone calls at the beginning of the year to one parent in particular of a first-time bus rider, a kindergartner, set the parent at ease and the child is off to a very positive start with the transportation to and from school in St. Lucie Public Schools. Mrs. Hubbard? And last but not least, from our volunteers, we could not do everything we do without the wonderful support of our volunteers, Mr. Andor from Mariposa. He has been at Mariposa for five years and in fact was named Mariposa's Outstanding Volunteer in 2013-14. He is the chairperson for their SAC Committee, he is the treasurer of their PTO, and he is involved in volunteer work because it is his mission to enhance the welcoming atmosphere for parents at Mariposa. He has painted and he has built tables for the parent resource room, he's helped paint the media center and the front office, and now he is presently building bulletin boards for their front office and cafeteria. He's also ever-present with fundraisers and fully supports the faculty and staff at Mariposa. So these wonderful examples of the fine service that we provide to our parents and students, we thank you all so much, and if you would step forward for a picture with our Superintendent and Board Chair.
Dr. Mills, we're gonna be recognizing different individuals from our different departments at our board meetings in the future. I think it's important that we show our unsung heroes appreciation. Ms. Hubbard, who was walking out the door, gets up at 4:30 a.m. every morning just to drive the buses, and again, as Ms. Patrick said, the bookends were the first, probably the first staff member that the students see in the morning and the last one in the afternoon, and she's representative of all of our fine bus drivers and the tremendous job that they do, as well as the other folks in our district, and so we want to make sure that we show our appreciation by trying to do these recognitions at the board meetings. Thank you, Ms. Hubbard, and for the rest of the folks as well.
Okay, at this time, we're going to move right along.
Again, before we do that, I want to congratulate everyone that received the STAR Award this evening. That means that you're real special and we thank you for your work and your labor in St. Lucie County Schools. CTA reports. Ms. Vicky Rodriguez, would you come to the podium, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, wanted to bring a couple of things to your attention, because it actually says it's comments but also reports, so I'm actually gonna give you a report. Uh, wanted to bring to your attention that we have signed seventeen LOUs, Letters of Understanding, since June 1st. I think that might be some kind of record, I'm not really sure, but I'm pretty sure it is. Um, every time we turn around, we're agreeing to something else. We have worked out the best and brightest award implementation. We're the first district in the state to have a letter of understanding as to how that's going to happen within the law, so I think that's pretty impressive. Um, we've worked out leave approvals, we've worked out bus aid bidding, we've worked out compensation and benefits, I mean, that's a small thing. We have worked out quite a few things, and so I am very appreciative of your team and my team for doing that work. We are getting ready to go into October, and October starts Walk in Your Shoes. The CTA has talked to you a little bit about that project before. Chris and I will be working alongside one of our members each month and learning about exactly what they do and how they do it to get a real inside look, and I want to again encourage you all to consider doing the same. Um, I know that when it's my turn to ride on the school bus with one of our bus aides, I'm just gonna stay up all night instead of actually getting up at 4:30, because that's been a long time since I've done that. I also wanted to bring to your attention our CU Conference, which is on September 14th. And let you know that we had sixty seats, and those sixty seats filled in less than eight hours, probably more like two or three, and there's a waiting list of about twenty-five. And what that says to us is that our members, our non-instructional members, are hungry, starving for professional development, and our district doesn't provide enough, and in some cases, not any. And so, as a learning organization and one that's dedicated to the professional intellectual growth of the teachers in the classrooms and the administrators at the district and at the school level, I want you not to forget the importance of having well-qualified, well-trained front desk clerks and folks that answer the phones and drive your buses and administer medications to kids. All of those people need the same high-quality professional development. Right now, there's a real void in our district, and it's not gonna be filled by an online, sit-at-your-desk, go-to-your-computer. Folks are hungry for the same type of professional development that teachers and you all get, which is that face-to-face opportunity to interact with each other. So, we need to think about how we provide that. Our professional development part- department, which isn't called that anymore, doesn't really have the capacity at this point to do that. They are really set up to do training for teachers and others, and I'd like for us to really consider what we need to do to be able to provide that same high-quality training to everyone in the district. We would love to be a part of that as the CTA CU. We really have been providing pretty much the only professional development most non-instructional folks are getting. We provided extensive professional development here in the district office, in the Transportation Department, at individual schools for non-instructional staff members. So, consider that when you- when you think, gee, you know, customer service could be better. Well, it can't be better unless you teach people how to do that and what that looks like, and so we need to really consider that. That is pretty much all I have. I just want you to know that you are all welcome to come and join us on the 14th to see what it's all about and talk to those folks that are on the ground that do the hard work, the real work. They meet the angry parent before that person gets to actually see the principal, they get to hear all the bad words before the person calms down. Um, and so part of our goal for our training is about wellness on the job and how to deal with stress and how to deal with difficult people and how to deal with adults with behavior issues. And so, we hope that you all will take some time on the 14th to join us at IRSC, at the Striver Center, to do that. Thank y'all, have a good evening.
Ms. Rodriguez, and thank you, CTA, for picking up the mantle and helping our support staff. We appreciate that very much. And it sounds like it's going to be a very powerful training. That is one of our focus points also, superintendent's focus point. So, it- everything's coming right on time and we're right on board with the training. Superintendent's focal point is communication, one of his points, communication, community, involve- engagement, and customer service. And so, we are moving forward with our vision and our mission, and we thank you again for your- your work and your labor as well. Uh, CWAs, are there any reports? Okay, thank you, Ms. Martha. No reports tonight from CWA, so we will move right along to our next agenda item, and it will- it's our consent agenda. Fellow board members, we have the agenda before us. Seven point one, I believe, to sixteen point three. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved by Ms. Harley and second by Mr. Ingersoll, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Board members, do you have any conflicts that you wish to declare on any of the items that are coming before us this evening? Hearing none, Superintendent Gent, may we receive your recommendations?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Board members, we have received the superintendent's recommendations. Are there any items you wish to comment on or discuss? Hearing none, we have received the recommendations. May I have a motion, please? So moved by Mr. Ingersoll and second by Ms. Hensley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any oppose? Motion carries five zero. At this point, we will have our reports, and we will hear superintendent and staff reports first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have three items for this evening. Number one, or two of them are happy, and celebrations. Our district received a grant, a $300,000 grant, a math-science partnership grant from the state of Florida. We just were informed of that, I believe, last week. It's tied directly for knowledge, tied directly to the Florida standards, particularly in science, as well as creating great teachers and increasing student achievement. Twenty-seven of our teachers from the grades four through eighth grade will be enrolled in a U- a U- a U-Future certificate program with the University of Florida. This will be a five, eight-week courses that are gonna be offered online using state-of-the-art instructional design. This will help our teachers really to be better teachers and have the content knowledge that they need, and I want to congratulate Dr. Wild and her department, particularly our Director of Curriculum, Nick Zarelik, and Science Program Specialist Beth Bonvy, and the grant writer, Dr. Jody Serta-Simo. Hope I got those out correctly. I'm not sure, Dr. Wild, if any of those folks are here this evening?
They're still back.
Okay, they're recovering from writing the grant, and they got us $300,000, so we'll give them a pass, but I think that's a- an excellent- excellent job by them, and I wanted to bring that to your attention. Secondly, today or this week, at Westwood High School and at Port St. Lucie High School, and there should be some pictures that go up on the wall here, our access now, we're now distributing the laptops to the students, and you can see some of the photos that are up there as well. We're gonna get some media coverage on that as well, but, uh, again, congratulations to these schools, as well as to the school board for making this come to life where the students will have access to the digital learning devices. Uh, our teachers will have a new methodology for their instructional delivery systems, and, uh, again, this is going on this week. You can see some of the pictures there, you can see, uh, Mr. O'Leary who asked for permission to be absent this evening, we- so that he could stay at the schools as they're distributing in this evening. We're gonna make sure we get a, uh, since it's a tech department, make sure we get a, uh, a picture of, uh, of, um, Terrence O'Leary over there at, uh, what time is it right now? 5:45, to make sure that's where he's at, not that I don't trust him, but, uh, he can do that. Again, that was a great, uh, it's a great opportunity for our students. And then finally, um, last week, the, uh, the Department of Education sent out, they'd had an independent study, or the state legislature had asked for an independent study on our Florida assessments, and particularly the Florida assessment system and the spring assessments that were given out. And, um, the study itself, which was done by a group called Alpine Testing Solutions, validated, um, the, the measuring of the Florida standards. And, um, I believe the board received that report, it's over a hundred and some pages long, and we really haven't broken it down yet, but I believe that I share this board, as well as superintendents across the state and most board members, that we really do take issue with the results of this survey. I think it's real important to note upfront that we support high standards, and we support rigor, and we support accountability in our schools, but we support it with a system that's valid, fair, equitable, and accurate, that aligns our standards, and it helps our students to be successful for either college or career. I think it's important to state that we have a moral, a moral obligation to accurately assess our students, and I don't believe at this time that the Florida standards and the assessments can be fairly used as in a- as a tool for teacher evaluations, nor to be used to calculate school grades. The report itself states, quote, "The precise magnitude of the problem is difficult to gauge with 100% accuracy, but the evaluation team can reasonably state that the spring 2015 administration of the FSA did not meet the normal rigor and standardization expected with a high-stakes assessment program like the FSA." There's comments like that are in this report, even though they found it to be a valid measure of assessments. Some of the major concerns themselves are the evaluation of the test items, particularly in grades three through 10 in the ELA, or which is the English portion of the test. Only 65% of the items were matched to Florida standards, which means 35% of the standards did not match the, um, the Florida standards. Also, these standards were field-tested in Utah, and I don't believe that you can go anywhere in the state of Florida to any community or any county that looks like Utah. Nothing against Utah, but the field testing itself in itself is flawed. The evaluations of the administration were problematic, as this district experienced, as well as districts from across the state regarding students to be able to get online, to get kicked out, to try to come back in, and if even one student was messed up and had a tough time with that, that's- that's one too many. The report also said, because of the, quote, "Because of the technical difficulties on the computer-based exams, scores for some students will be suspect," end of quotes. Some of the districts, as I stated, had more problems than others. So, we find ourselves in very familiar terr- territory with serious questions regarding the value and the accuracy of school grades, its effect on students and teachers, and the entire A-through-F grading system. Most of us understand and support a business model that sets standards has consequences, but also has the resources to meet the standards and does not micromanage its managers and workers every step of the way. We don't have that in Florida public schools at the moment. I think that it's important, so what do we do from here? I think it's important that we continue to work with our state legislatures, as this school board is, as with the consortium is doing as well, and we may have to get our parents actively involved, that we delay the use of the Florida assessments or the Florida state's assessments, the FSA, to determine school grade, student promotions, graduations, or teacher evaluations until July 1, 2017, and create a workable and efficient accountability system that it shouldn't be implemented before July 1, 2016. We should use 2015 and 2016 state assessment data as baseline data solely for diagnostic purposes in order to assure that the state system is reliable, fair, and a valid baseline for 2017-2018. We should ask that the State Board of Education and Commissioner conduct a concordance of national assessments for all grade levels, including but not limited to ACT, PSAT, SAT, the Florida standards, so district- I think it's important that we also would make permanent our 2014-15 procedure for determining third-grade retention and promotion. This year, states or districts were given a lot of, were given more flexibility than normal in that because of questions regarding the validity of the test itself. I've been saying this for many years, I know this board has, as long as school boards and superintendents across the state, that the state really needs to slow down to ensure that we have a valid, fair, and equitable accountability system, and that those results really be used as a baseline for data-only right now. It's also worth noting that other states that use the same testing vendor, Montana, Nevada, and North Dakota, are also reviewing their test practices as they experience a series of breakdowns in administering the test and problems with transferring the bank of test items. It's kind of like you go to get a physical in the spring, and you want a complete physical, and you get a CAT scan, and you're focused really on the two most important functions of the body is the brain and the heart. So, then you want instant results. You want to know what that physical states for you, so you can either adjust your standard of living, get a correct medication, or whatever. And if we view this as well as an assessment that really takes to gauge the temperature of our students, we don't have the results yet from that. So, it would be insane to take a physical in September, or I'm sorry, in April, or in May, or in March, and not have the results till sometime before the winter break or before Christmas. That would be medical malpractice. And yet, that's what we're doing to our students right now without having this information, that we can make decisions for students in the summer, we can adjust our curriculums, we can make sure that we're aligned to the standards, so that we can have a diagnosis of the student and the needs of the students, and then accurately prepare a solution for that. And we really lack that right now. Thus, why we're saying we need to slow this down. Again, I say it's a moral imperative for our students, because these students are, they send us their best and their brightest, and we have an obligation to educate them. But we also have an obligation to make sure that when we evaluate our students and our teachers, it's through a valid and fair measurement system. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Chen. Attorney Harold, do you have any reports or comments? Okay. Before we start with our board member reports, we're going to ask Ms. Hensley now to give us a report on the consortium legislative program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amen to what the superintendent said. As you know, that many things that he has brought forward are things that we put in our legislative priorities. Everything that we put down as priorities for our multi-county work group was taken to the consortium, and everyone was adopted into the platform. There was some conversation, because as you know, not all counties are the same, but the criteria for the consortium is if it helps a county and does not hurt any county, that it's something we want to be supportive of. So, the accountability measures were completely stricken, rewritten with much more specificity and tightened up a little bit. And we have several other issues that we thought were important, and the fact that they were all adopted is pretty interesting, because that doesn't usually happen, because we sent in, I think, twelve. And those, because they were all accepted at a consortium meeting, those same priorities have been sent on to the State School Board Association for the legislative discussion. So, I am asking that you accept the greater consortium of school board's legislative platform in total, as well as including the other issues, additional issues, which will also be worked for with all legislators by all advocates.
Okay. We have, can we get a motion on that?
Still moved.
Still moved by Ms. Harley and second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Board member reports. Let's start with Mr. Ingersoll this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Just between the last meeting and this meeting, we had a value board, and we voted on all the special magistrates. There's like six of them all together, a couple of them out of town, so just to let you all know.
Ms. Harley? Ms. Hilsen?
I just want to share briefly. I haven't shared since my trip, but I was blessed, very fortunate. My daughter has married someone from Ireland, and this summer, I was able to go to Ireland, and I was able to go to HMH in Ireland, the Houghton Mifflin Hardcore, the organization there, and Dublin, which was fascinating and incredible to me. And I learned so much. I think they learned a lot. I started out with two people and ended up with thirty people. And watching this computer rollout that we're doing in our high schools presently made me think of their questions, and they asked so many questions about the internet and what we're doing. I mean, they know a lot in the parent academy and different things. But what I did find out, which I thought was incredibly interesting, their policy in England and in Ireland, and I believe Scotland as well, if students take holiday and don't come to school, they charge the family sixty pounds, which is like eighty-five dollars. So, their truancy, I can't imagine it ever working in the states, but it works very effectively there. These are public schools. They are not private schools, and the principal makes the determination. Now, I'm not talking about sick days. I'm talking about holidays. So, if you take too many holidays, parents have to pay. But one thing I said to them was, everybody here is basically Irish. In the states, I said, we are so many different groups of people, so many different languages. And so, I think about that when our scores are compared, United States with Japan and China and India, and even Ireland, all these different countries, that our teachers have, it's just a heavier lift to do, I think, because in one classroom, you may have four or five or six different languages, and the expectation, and I think they were very aware of that, too. I mean, they have poverty in Ireland, but everything is different. In the states, we just, we educate all children, you know, regardless of disabilities, regardless of poverty. So, it's very eye-opening to me, and I learned so much and how important it is. The world is getting smaller and smaller because of the internet. But I just wanted to bring that back, because it was such a great learning experience for me, just education, not even sightseeing, the education piece. So, that's it. Thank you.
For that update on your trip to Ireland. And we learned a few things as a result of you going there. Okay. Now, Ms. Hensley, do you have any reports this evening?
I think that I did spend three days in Sarasota last week at the School Board Association Board of Directors meeting. And I think it's an opportunity. We have a new executive director. We are be crafting a new vision for the future, as well as looking at new opportunities for board training and development. And we are probably going to be a little bit more assertive with our advocacy than we have seen in the last few years. So, it's an exciting time, and I would encourage you that if you get a survey asking for your opinion on whatever the topic might be, that you would respond to that, because that's going to help craft the direction that the organization goes in the future. We will be seeing more and more, I believe, of the dysfunction that some of the school boards are having around the state become a topic of great concern. And there's another issue, why we, as board members with no agenda except for the children, that we are the ones that stand in, hopefully, in the way to help start crafting education policy, because school board members and superintendents and our partners should be the ones that are giving the most input into school board policy for the state, and the big money is at play.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Okay. I do have a couple of comments and announcements on tomorrow, which I know is last minute, but tomorrow, we will have our superintendent do a meet-and-greet community meeting. And this will be held, we also have asked our deputy superintendent to come and introduce himself to the community as well. This meeting will be held at Miracle Prayer Temple. It's on the north side of Fort Pierce. And it will, the address is 3215 Avenue Q, 3215. It begins at 5:45. Everyone is welcome to come. Superintendent will do a presentation, and then we will have a time for questions from the community. So, we are very excited about that. Also, on September the 11th, we always have here, Fort Pierce and Port St. Lucie, I don't have the information for Port St. Lucie, but for Fort Pierce, I do. We have a day of remembrance, a memorial, every year. And it's always at the same place, which is the Riverwalk Community Center over by the river downtown Fort Pierce. It's 600 Indian River Drive is the address of the community center. And that will begin at 9:30. That is this, what is that, Thursday, 9/11, September 11? At 9:30, we will have our Lincoln Park chorus, thank you to the principal of Lincoln Park for being so on time and helping with this memorial. And we will have our city officials there with the mayor opening up the program. So, just so that we can be together as a community here in Fort Pierce, and anyone you know that may be able to make it at that time. It's 9:30. It starts right on time. It's over within an hour or less. Port St. Lucie also has one. Does anybody have any information on Port St. Lucie's 9/11 event? Okay. Well, they also have one each year as well. So, I'm sure you can go right to the Civic Center, the community center there, and get that information as well online. CWA, I just wanted to say thank you, because I know that you are working earnestly with CTA on this training, and I wanted to make sure you knew that we appreciate your willingness to also work earnestly with our union, other unions. It's good that we work together, and we appreciate that. Publication that we have that's come out, I absolutely love these publications. Where's Ms. Carey? Patrick, thank you very much. They're very entertaining, and they also, just the way they're set up, it's very attractive. And this time around, we are talking about all of our career and technology educational programs, and how we have expanded our students' opportunities for college career readiness. And so, we're excited about that. A lot of people don't know, but we have a lot of programs here in St. Lucie County for our students in this area. We have our aerospace technologies, our agri-technology, which is our farming. We have the veterinarian. We have the digital design, and it goes on and on, industrial biotechnology. So, we have so much to give culinary arts, I guess I better say a few more, finance, we have automobile maintenance and light repair, and drafting and illustrative design are just a few. And so, please read this, insert this publication. It would be very informative as to what's going on in St. Lucie County. And what, does it come out every three months?
That's what they're issuing, September 3, PCP.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Patrick. Doing a good work here. This is good news going out. Okay. I did forget to make one more announcement, and that is just that the Florida House of Representatives will be hosting, Representative Larry Lee Jr. will be hosting a, this year, our St. Lucie County Legislative Delegation Meeting. And it will be held right here in our community. If you're interested in knowing more about it, please write this number down. We will close with a mission statement for our schools. And after saying it for almost a year now, I think I know it a little better than I did when I started out. I hope that it's helped everyone else as well. The mission statement of St. Lucie Public Schools is to ensure that all of our students graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, the skills, and the desire to succeed. Now, our next board meeting will be August 25, 2015, and at this time, we will adjourn.